Fifteenth West Windsor Planning Board regular meeting is adjourned at its commencement at 7:05 PM. Mr. Advisor, notice, time, date, and location. To the extent known, agenda of subject meeting was promptly posted in the public place, reserved for such or similar announcements on June 9th, 2022. Transmitted to the Times, Princeton Packet, West Windsor and Plainsboro News on June 9th, 2022, followed Town Street Clerk on June 9th, 2022. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bobree? Mr. Schectel?
Here.
Mr. Pankoff?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Here.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Here.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Carr?
Here.
Chairman O'Brien?
First item is consent agenda minutes from May 18th and May 25th. Does any planning board member have any changes, amendments, or modifications to the minutes from May 18th?
Hi, can I do?
Sue, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, the 18th of May.
Okay, one moment. Sue has a couple of amendments.
On the 18th of May, under Chairman's comments and correspondence, I believe, the next to the last line in that first paragraph, hybrid meetings, should it be hybrid, H-Y-B-R-I-D?
Cindy, you have that?
Oh, here it is. Spell it for me.
H-Y-B-R-I-D.
Okay, thank you.
It's the fourth one down.
And I have the same comment, under application, the first application, the first paragraph, where you reference phase one involves developing three warehouse buildings. I referenced the meeting before this, that I would like the E1, C1, and B1 put in there. And again, in phase two, A1, D1, B21, and B22. If that's all right.
Got it, thanks.
And down at bottom, on the underline, three underlined sections, the second one, in response to a question about control of traffic, going on through that, it says, developments, internal roadways, as Clarksville wrote, Mr. Muller opined that the board has authority to set regulations. Should that be Attorney Muller? Yes, it'll, I'll change it to Attorney Muller. Okay, thank you.
And on page three, the second line, it's lighting at the, that second, that word is lighting.
On page two, at the bottom, the first underlined section, starting during Mr. Panky's testimony, Mercer, in Mercer County, should be capitalized. Then it says, and it includes recommendation, it should be recommendations, for signalization of the intersection at Quaker Bridge and Lawrence Station Roads, period.
Any other comments, changes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from May?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 18, 2022 minutes of the planning board as amended.
Seconded.
Okay, approved by Simon and seconded by Curtis. Well, so I guess all in favor say yea.
Aye.
Any nays?
I abstain, I wasn't there.
And Alan, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Thank you. Any changes to the May 25th minutes?
I just have the same comment, where phase one identified the three buildings, and phase two identifies the three buildings.
Cindy, you have that?
Yes.
Okay, any other changes?
I just had a question regarding, under Chairman's comments, did Chairman O'Brien indicate that the meeting was going to be taped and televised on PBS?
Well, he meant, he meant the West Windsor Channel.
No, I think there was a reporter here who said they were from PBS, and he asked them, is he live televising this? And the person answered, tomorrow, or something like that, he would be televising it, and that's probably where that came from.
Okay, that's the day the reporter was here. Okay, so if that's the case, then it should be noted as to exactly where it would have been televised.
As far as I, I don't know if they ever televised it. I have no idea. That was just, that was just a conversation that happened.
Can we, can we find that out and then revise where it would have been televised? Do we know? No?
Yeah, I took it word for word from the recording.
Okay, so that's the word for word from the recording. Any other changes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the May 25th?
I'll move approval of the May 25th, 2020 minutes of the planning board.
I'll second.
Alan, second. Simon made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? And there are no absences, so motion to approve May 25th minutes passed. Okay. So, the first application is for PB 22-03 SW SEMA Network, Pep Boys Advance Auto Parts sign waiver request. The applicant, SEMA Network, is seeking signage plan approval, as well as a waiver relief for an existing Pep Boys Auto Parts and Service Store. The site, which is identified municipal tax code, tax records as block 7.03 lot 1, is located at 3505 US Route 1, in the B-2 Neighborhood Center Business District. Applicant is seeking waivers for the following: maximum number of signs, maximum letter height, garage door signage, under canopy signage, and loading bay signage.
Mike, let me just say, I was gonna say, proof of publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction, so you can proceed.
Thank you, members of the board, members, professional, members of the public. My name is Tim Arch, attorney, licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here representing SEMA Network on this application. By way of a little bit of background, this is a property located at 3505 Brunswick Pike. You might know it as Pep Boys. What you may not know is that Pep Boys is shifting its business model, I believe, across the nation, where Pep Boys is going to be handling the auto service portion of the business model, but that the retail portion is now going to be handled by Pep Boys Auto Parts. It's not a merger of two companies, just to be clear, it's a, they are both still two independent companies, but because of the nature of that arrangement, you do have basically two business entities that are operating one site, and so that necessitates a change of the signage in order to differentiate. And so we are here asking for, we're not asking for any variances, we're asking for design waivers from the sign, design standards, as a result of that sort of unique situation at the site. By way of a little bit of housekeeping, I do have staff memorandums, I have one dated April 21st, 2022, and one dated June 7th, 2022. Both of those are authored by David Novak. The one was prior to the TRC that we have, we have a little post-TRC, so I think the June 7th one is the, essentially, the most up-to-date one. I would just ask if there's any other additional staff memos that I'm not receiving of.
No additional memos.
Thank you. And I will go through, just based on that memo, I will go through the waivers that we are asking for. We have one, today, with the testimonial. Of the waivers that we are asking for, we are asking for a waiver from the number of signs, again, that's necessitated by the business situation there at the site. We are asking for a waiver of overall sign area. I'll stress that the signs that were, that were requesting the sign standard is 50 square feet maximum area. Each of the signs falls below that, but if you took them in cumulatively, it would be above that. So we're being rather extra thorough on the interpretation of the, of the waivers. We're asking for a waiver of maximum letter height from 18 inches, which is what your standard is, to 21 inches for one of the signs. And we'll provide the testimony as to why we think that that is necessary. In addition to that, there is a garage door final decal sum. The sign standards do not specifically address garage door signage, and so we're asking for a waiver. There's generally, under the municipal land use law, if something is specifically permitted, it's assumed to not be permitted. So again, we'll be overly thorough, but we're asking for a waiver for that garage door. Again, we're also asking, there's two hanging under canopy signs, and those aren't specifically addressed with the sign standards. There is some hanging sign requirements, but that's for, I think it's efficient to different types of signs. In any manner, we're asking a waiver for those canopy signs. And finally, we're asking for a waiver for bay door signage. These would be things like vinyl lettering that indicate oil change, or tire rotation along the bays on the side. Again, there is that specific language that addresses that, and so we're asking for waivers to have that signage there. We think all these are very minimal design waivers for grant. I'm sure this board loves hearing attorney talk for a long time, but I don't want to bore you any longer with the, well, with grant. So I'll get to my first witness. This is Mr. Bill Lockett, and I would ask that he would be sworn in.
Sure. Mr. Lockett, raise your right hand, and do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? So, affirmed, and please just state and spell your name for the record, please.
Sure, my name is William Lockett.
Can you pull it closer?
Talking to the mic, please.
Is that better?
Just go very close to it.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. William Lockett, L-O-C-K-E-T-T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lockett, before your presentation, can you just give us the benefit of your, your background, your, any professional licenses, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely. I, I'm the president and owner of SEMA Network. We are a national signage and branding firm. We represent both Pep Boys and Advance in this application.
Can you speak into the mic more, bring the mic towards you, please?
Yeah, we, we represent. Is it okay if I hold it this way here?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Yes, we're, and we're a national sign firm. We represent both Pep Boys and Advance with regard to this application, not just here, but all throughout the United States.
Accepted.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lockett, I believe you're accepting as an expert in signage.
Are you testifying as an engineer, or just as a president, as a principal of the, the company?
As a principal of a sign.
Okay, that's fine. I, I think we can accept you as a fact witness.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lockett, if you can, please take us through the proposed signage and explain why waivers are necessary and justified. And I will ask for you to add, mark, for the benefit of the record, we had previously provided a sign package, but I would mark that as...
We'll make that A1.
A1.
Yeah.
And you could just refer to that, refer to A1, if you're gonna reference that.
Sure, thank you, Tim. Can everyone hear me? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, so this location, as Tim pointed out, is currently just a Pep Boys location, which currently does both retail and retail automotive, as well as retail service on cars. They will be dividing the business in half and leasing it to Advance Auto, who will take over that portion of the businesses, as Tim pointed out. Currently, the location is right off of Route 1 South, very heavily trafficked road, multiple lanes. There is no direct entrance currently into the, the facility. You have to get into the turning lane, lane there, and make a right on Emmons Road. The building itself, as a freestanding building, is setback considerably from the road compared to other buildings that are, that are much closer to the road, therefore creating a little bit more of a need for visibility, especially with the rate of speed and number of lanes. From a safety and wayfinding perspective, we really think it's critical that we are able to give vehicular traffic enough time to be able to see the sign, navigate safely over to the right lane, and be able to turn onto Emmons Drive, but as well as to navigate the potential vehicles through the facility with the changes in business. That's going to be new to them. When you think about when and why people go to auto repair and automotive services for retail, oftentimes, there's a challenge. They're, they're paying attention to what happens with the car. They, they want to get there, they want to get there quickly, and they really, truly, from a safety perspective, have to have adequate signage and wayfinding in order to get there. The new store configuration plays a big role in our application, because currently, when they carve the building up, Pep Boys entrance will now be on the Emmons side side. Advance entrance will be on the Route 1 side. That is, so when you take that into consideration, not having a sign for Pep Boys on Route 1, and when you look at the existing freestanding pylon sign, it's only about 32 square feet. There's dense trees there that have kind of grown up and around the freestanding sign. And with the change and not coming back to the board for a larger pylon sign, Pep Boys and Advance will be splitting that 32 square foot, and thus reducing the freestanding sign visibility by half. So as part of this application, and really where the extra sign comes into play, is we're asking for a sign for Pep Boys on the Route 1 side, as well as the sign over their entrance. In terms of the sign square footage that Pep Boys is asking for, I do believe it meets the requirements of both 18-inch letter height and is under the 50-square-foot allotment. As far as the Advance sign, which would be, we are looking to place on the Route 1 side, we are asking for a waiver from 18 to 21 inches. If any of you all are familiar with the current Pep Boys, it's really, really hard to see, but I think it's been there for a long time, so the hope is, is that, that people are able to find it. But Advance, being a new tenant, a brand-new brand in the space, trying to communicate their brand message to the public, we really feel with the rate of speed in the building setback, that that extra three inches is really critical to the application. It gives us about another 30 to 60 feet of visibility, and, and the ability for a vehicle to see that at that rate of speed.
Mr. Lockett, sorry, are you, are you talking about the sign label number six on the plan?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. So, on exhibit A1, I'm, I'm referring in my testimony to sign P3 on sheet 3, P4 on sheet 4, and P3 on sheet 4.
And then, to be clear, the facade signs that are actually on the building itself, we're not talking about the pylon sign.
That's, that's correct. The, the pylon sign currently conforms to code and will be refaced under, under a permit for both tenants.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the entrance for Advance Auto Parts is going to be from Route 1?
No, there is no entrance onto the property from Route 1.
For either Pep Boys or Advance Auto Parts?
That's correct.
Just the sign will be posted facing Route 1?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, just to state that, that's a great question, because there is no entrance. That's why we're asking for the Pep Boys sign, which is referenced.
So the sign that you have labeled number seven on the drawing, and I guess it's all blue on the other piece, that's, that's going to be one of these signs, this directional?
I'm sorry?
I said the one you have labeled number seven, when somebody comes in from Emmons Drive, that's a directional sign, that's going to say...
Yes, the one that would, essentially, now that there will be two tenants in the building, that's an additional indicator as a directional sign. Once you park, now you know where to go for the door.
So there'll be something telling people they have to go all around the building to get to the Advance Auto Parts.
Oh, I understand. Great question. So when you come off of Emmons into the main entrance, there is currently a directional sign that's existing, that is not part of this application, and that directs the traffic to the right, as opposed to the other building to the left. That will be refaced under permit for both Advance and Pep Boys to help with the vehicular traffic navigating, once you're within the facility. The bulk of our application is really to get people off of Route 1 safely into the facility, and then that secondary signage that we referenced, that is not currently governed under code, but we're asking for a waiver because it's presumed to be not to code, is further directional, once you're within the facility, to navigate around. And, and just in general, just to point out, just a couple things here is, again, I mentioned, while we were asking for relief in letter height, I just want to say with Advance, with all of these signs, they are fairly significantly under the allowed 50 square feet. Second, we, we need two signs, because the building, the building now occupies two tenants. So while the waiver appears that we're asking for two signs, it's, it's really kind of one, but as Tim mentioned, we wanted to be extra cautious and conservative in terms of coming to the board for the waiver. And the, the last thing I would say is that the requested square footage is really minimal in terms of how much square footage is occupying the facade comparatively to other businesses in and along Route 1. And that's, that's really all of I, I have in terms of testimony for this application.
So the Pep Boys sign on Emmons Drive is 21 inch, 21 feet, 2 inches in length. The Pep Boys sign on US Route 1 Southbound is 12 foot, 6 inches in length, the, the red section. But both of the signs I described are 5 foot, 2 inches in height. My question is, the actual lettering Pep Boys with the below-line auto service ampersand tires, are they the same size, the actual lettering on the, at those two locations? I'm looking at page 3 and page 4. Thank you. So the actual lettering is the same size, although bigger background at the Emmons location, and smaller along Highway 1?
That's correct, yes. If you reference on exhibit A1, sheet 6 shows one of the details, and sheet 9 shows the other detail, they're both 38 total square feet.
Hey, Bill, you know, your, your building is unfortunately a casualty of...
Rob, hold the mic.
Tom Jones. Your building is unfortunately a casualty of the Princetonian diner, and the location of that diner. So your building is unfortunately a casualty of the Princetonian diner. So this 16% increase in the scale, the font of the sign, what does that equate to? I know you said 30 to 60 feet in terms of visibility, but what would that equate to in terms of eye time, in terms of eye exposure? Because that's always been a problem for me. I've, I've lived here for 25 years, and I do frequent that store.
Yeah.
And it's a real issue.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so, you know, as part of any application, when we come in, we're, we're really trying to be minimalistic for the community. I, I think West Windsor's guidelines have always been really stringent. It's, you know, you don't want big signs in the community, and Pep Boys and Advance want to be part of the community. So when we, when we look at this, we don't just come in to try and get as much as we can and work backwards. We really looked at it and thought, you know, you know, some people would ask, why are you coming in here for 3 inches? Well, 3 inches gives us just enough to represent the brand and get people safely into the location. Ideally, they would be asking for a sign that was 30 inches or higher in a situation like this. And, and Pep Boys would be asking for a 36-inch or higher in situations like this. For a point of reference, and it's probably not extremely important, but the sign currently for Pep Boys is the smallest sign in the entire chain as it relates to letter height.
So, to my question, what would it be in terms of eye time?
I don't, Robert, I'm sorry, I don't have that data for you. I don't have that exact answer.
Because quite honestly, I thought the 16% increase wasn't going to do very much.
Yeah.
And while this is part of the community, it's also Route 1, which is a little different than being on Clarksville Road.
Yeah.
I mean, people don't understand when they're driving on Route 1, it's about advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's been helpful, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Bill, I'd just ask you a couple of follow-up questions. In terms of signage on site, under canopy signs, and bay door signage that relates to oil changes, tire rotation, those sorts of things, can you tell us a little bit about that, about the need to have those signs on site?
Yeah, so those signs are all just vinyl in nature. They're 8-inch copy height, I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the bay signs, and what they do is they label the services that are essentially in each individual bay, and allow, you know, the mechanics to be able to identify them and pull the vehicles into the proper bay. It's a, it's a standard throughout all of the Pep Boy locations. The under canopy sign is a standard with this change in business, and the fact that they're adding two tenants to the buildings, the under canopy sign was designed to be able to navigate the pedestrians from the complex to the proper door quickly, efficiently, safely, and effectively.
Where, where is the canopy that you're talking about? Is it the structure all around the, the building?
Yeah, so that's the, around the, what will be the Pep Boy side, and it's, it's existing, and comes to the corner of the building, and back onto Route 1, is a metal canopy structure that projects out off of the building. So the under canopy sign will, will, will not project further out than that, it will sit within that footprint underneath the canopy.
So it's not like a fabric canopy that hangs there with a, a sign on that already?
Correct, no, it's a metal canopy, that, and the sign would be bolted and affixed to that underside.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Okay. Before I give you a couple of questions, anybody have any questions? Okay, let's hear from you, David.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you, so sworn, and just state, state your name, please.
This is David Novak, for the record, N-O-V-A-K, with Burgess Associates, and I am the Township Planning Consultant. I had a memo that was dated June 7th, 2022. I outlined the waivers which are required for the proposed signage, which I believe the applicant did address. It's important to keep in mind that these are design waivers and not necessarily variances, so that relates to a different standard which is established in the municipal land use law, that's 40:55 D-51B, where the literal enforcement of the ordinance would prove to be unreasonable with the proposed signs that are, with this development. So while there are a number of waivers that are required for this application, when you look at it as a whole, I understand where the applicant is coming from with their testimony in regards to both advertising the business, allowing for signage which is large enough to direct traffic appropriately into the site, as well as directing vehicles into different bays. So there's a lot of different operational aspects that happen with this type of use, so I can understand the, the request for the number of waivers that, which are required. Other than that, I really have no additional comments unless anybody had questions for me. It's just, like I said, just a bunch of signage waivers.
I have a quick question, David.
Okay.
If I may. For the wall signage, you, you've indicated for the maximum sign area, you're suggesting three waivers for each of those signs, as opposed to one... you're suggesting three waivers for each of those signs as opposed to one that covers the whole?
That's a good question. The table's a little bit confusing, so it would be one waiver for the collective signage area. Each sign is below that 50 square foot requirement, but when you add up the total aggregate area, that's above the required 50 square feet. Should really just be 1W in that whole row.
Okay, got it.
Any other members? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to bring up that, as I recall, when John Madden was our planner, we spent a good two years on a signage ordinance, and we passed it on to the Township Council. And my understanding is that never was voted on, or if it was, it was never passed. So I'm just curious. I would think that if it hadn't been passed, then these waivers wouldn't be coming to the planning board because it would be in the ordinance. And they would adhere to that ordinance, and then it would be fine. As I recall, that ordinance had signage, lettering based on the mileage of the road in front of whatever retail establishment it was, speed.
Is that accurate, that the ordinance wasn't passed after it was, you know, planned?
That was before my time, so I'm unfamiliar with that draft ordinance. I'd have to ask Mr. Surtis if he remembers that.
That's correct. We met with, there was a subcommittee of the Township Council that met with staff.
Can you speak up, Sam? I can't hear you.
The township staff met with the subcommittee of the Township Council. We thought we worked out any questions they had when the signed ordinance was brought before the council for official action to introduce. There wasn't sufficient votes to introduce the ordinance, so it died right there.
So that, does that mean that the signed ordinance that was in effect prior to that kind of planning is in effect right now?
That's the current signed ordinance. Unless a new ordinance is adopted, the old ordinance stands.
So then my question for the applicant and David is that are the waivers that are being asked for, that would be for the existing sign ordinance, right?
Yes, they would all be waivers from Section 200-32A2, which are permitted signs in non-residential districts.
Okay.
There's a, not to get too confusing, but there's another section that deals with permitted signs in non-residential districts, which are planned developments. You'll hear more about that later tonight, I believe, but this is a separate section of the ordinance.
I guess that's what was in my head, because we've had a lot of applicants come before the board regarding signage in commercial developments, and we've always applied whatever the ordinance was.
If there was a, if this was in a planned development, I didn't do the comparison, but for example, wall signage would change based on how far a building is away from the right of way. So that's not the case here, though.
Well, if there was such an ordinance or planned ordinance or something, and this probably isn't the place, if there's some interest in relooking at that, I'm sure that can be done, because we do tend to get a lot of sign ordinances here, or sign waivers and things, so.
Okay, so take, you know, Simon's, you know, what he brings up, you know, this is Route One, the speed on Route One is what it is. Okay, so notice.
Okay, good, great, because, you know, I mean, we spent like two years doing it.
I hear you.
Do you know how long ago that was? How long ago was it? Three years, five years, 10?
I think it was probably five, five years ago, maybe?
It's been a while since I remember. So, okay, so any other comments or questions for either professionals or the applicant? Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Okay, move by Andrea.
Second.
Second by Annis. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Mr. Schigtel?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Hoberman?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cork?
Yes. Motion applicant approved.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
I think. Mr. Chairman, I think we've got it all set up now.
All set? Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is PB 20-15 amended Princeton Junction train station redevelopment, amended final site plan and sign waivers. Applicant Avalon Bay seeks amended preliminary and final site plan approval for Block 6, Lots 854, 55.01, and 76. The site is located in the RP-1 Princeton Junction redevelopment plan district. Applicant previously received approval for a mixed-use development consisting of multifamily dwellings, townhouses, senior housing, and commercial tenants. His application for amended approval seeks to increase the height of the east parking garage from five stories to six stories. Approval of signage details, locations, and associated landscaping, and the placement of temporary signage, and a temporary sales trailer. No variances are requested.
Thank you.
Proof of service and publication are in order, and the board has jurisdiction. Please proceed.
Thank you.
The mayor stepped down. Right. Is that what he's trying? He's back. Mayor, are you back? Okay, okay. Okay.
Okay, you cannot interrupt. There's an application waiting to be heard. You cannot interrupt us, okay? We're all volunteers, and we're waiting too, and we have the applicant waiting with all his professionals. I'm not, I'm not going to listen to this. Please stop.
Excuse me.
Turn, can you turn on the mic?
Mr. Hoberman, can you please let the mayor know?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You're out of order, ma'am.
Please, unless you have something to say, you could wait to the end, and then you could say whatever you want. Not regarding.
We want to know why the agenda was changed, and Mr. Mayor, this is 120 letters. The mayor was just trying to throw this out. The mayor was just trying to throw this out.
Okay, let me state.
These tactics of yours are extremely disturbing.
I was being nice to the kids. They said they wanted to give me the letters. I was willing to take the letters. You are misusing the, misusing the thing.
We will decide. We will decide when you get the letters. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to PB 20-15. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Richard Hoffa Law Firm, a bizgare Hoff, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Avalon Bay Communities. As the chairman indicated, we were previously granted approval for this project October of last year, a mixed-use project commonly known as Princeton Junction redevelopment area. At that time, as the board may recall, we didn't submit any signage application. We waited approval. We went back, took a look at the various aspects of signage, and recognized we were coming back. We're now back here today with our signage package, and as the chairman indicated, there is an amended site plan aspect of this related to the parking garage and the location of the sales and construction trailers. Those are sort of the site plan issues, but those site plan issues, as was also indicated, do not require any variance relief. They're really somewhat de minimis in nature, but they do impact site plans, so we are going to talk about them here tonight. But the majority of the presentation will be about the signage. I've handed out to members of the board a document that we've pre-marked Exhibit A1. My apologies, I only noticed tonight that I didn't put page numbers on them. I apologize for that, but we will be clear. Each sheet is different. We'll reference it as we go along, and each of the witnesses will bring it up on the board, so you'll know what page we're referring to. So I have two witnesses here tonight. Our first is our civil engineer, Dan Sobieski. He's going to talk about what we call the technical issues that related to the garage and the sales and construction trailer, and then we're going to turn it over to Jim Constantine, who's our professional planner. He's going to walk the board through the signage package. So with that, I'd like to call Mr. Sobieski and get started.
How many witnesses do you have? Two, okay. We'll swear. Are you both in at the same time, if you don't mind?
Sure. If you could both raise your right hand, please.
Please stand up and raise your right hand, and we'll go through names and who you are.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth? Thank you. If you could both please give your name and the spellings of your name.
Please speak into the mic.
Daniel Sobieski, S-O-B-I-E-S-K-I.
Jim Constantine, C-O-N-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-E.
And Mr. Sobieski, could you just give us the benefit of your professional credentials, please?
I am the engineer of record for this application. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license number GE55019. I graduate from the Pennsylvania State University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and I have nine-plus years of related experience in the land development field with projects ranging from large-scale residential, retail, and commercial throughout New Jersey.
Is your license current in New Jersey?
It is.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so affirm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, if we're going to work off of that slide deck that I referenced, it's up behind you. You're here to talk about the garage, and that starts on.
That'll start on Sheet Number Three. The first two pages are just an introduction on the topics we'll discuss tonight. I'd like you to touch first, the first prayer for relief tonight is to change the east garage by increasing the stories. Is that correct?
That is correct. As part of this amended site plan application, the applicant is proposing to add an additional story to the east parking garage. Per the previous approval, the east garage was five stories in height and provided a total of 495 spaces. This amended site plan increases the garage height to six stories and provides a total of 611 spaces, which is a net increase of 116 spaces. With this additional story, the garage still complies with the maximum height restriction for parking structure in the RP-1 district. It shall be noted that the garage footprint and storage room are unchanged from the original application, and there are no proposed changes to the proved utility design or stormwater management design. Consistent with the previous approval, EV-ready parking spaces and handicap-accessible parking spaces will be provided on the additional level of the parking garage. The amended site plan will provide 50 EV-ready parking spaces where 17.4 are required and 13 ADA accessible spaces where 12 are required. Daniel, my major question is, why the change? Why do you need another 116 spaces in east garage? I haven't heard the reasoning yet.
The reason was simply a determination by us that the additional parking would be necessary to meet the demands of the overall project. As you'll recall, the east garage serves not just Avalon Bay, but it also serves the retail and a portion of the Atria community as well. So we felt with the extra garage, it will, the extra space on this additional story will be dedicated solely to the residential, so it increases the availability of additional space on the lower levels for the other uses within the community at large. We only get one chance to do the garage, so we wanted to ensure there would be sufficient parking, because once it's up, we're not going back and doing it again.
So, and I know we're dealing with out signage tonight in some way, but how does, how does retail customer entering garage?
how does retail customer entering garage know that I park here, but I don't park there in relation to resident parking?
There's gates. There would be access ways to get to certain portions of the garage, so the retail won't get access to the upper levels, nor I wouldn't think a retail user would wanna park on the fifth story of a parking garage to get to a ground-floor retail. So, we think part of that takes care of itself, but to the, to your direct question, there are areas that will can only be accessed by the residential users.
Why would a residential user wanna park on the top?
Talking to the micro, please.
What would be their motivation for parking on the top level?
Because they'll have arrangements where that could be their designated space, and it connects to the units directly.
Could you answer on the EV charging? Now, how many EV chargers did you have in that parking garage before this addition?
There were fifty before, forty-seven before, and now there's fifty, I believe, was the calculation.
Because presumably you're under the fifteen percent rule?
The prior application was exempt.
I understand that the prior application was exempt, but this floor is being made after the law took effect.
Correct.
So I would assume, the way I would calculate that out, you would be adding eleven or twelve make-ready spaces, or an additional five percent, which would be a six EV charging spaces. At this point, if that floor was considered under the new law, which, I mean, you could, you could make a parking garage with three spaces and say it was under the old law, and then put, add a thousand and say, oh hey, it's still under this old law. I don't, I don't think that works. I think if you're adding a full floor after a law is passed, then that floor should be under the new rules.
Well, that, again, this floor would be reserved for the residential only, so I don't know that it makes sense to have.
I'm not saying you have to put it on that floor. You can put them wherever you want in the garage, but, and I, and I think with residential, they would want, I mean, people in West Windsor are buying a lot of electric cars. You'll probably thank me in five years, but I feel that if you're ma, if you're adding an entire floor, if you're adding five spots, it's nothing, whatever, you're, you're adding a large number of spots, increasing your garage by a huge amount, then by that amount, since you've made this proposal and it was accepted under the new law, I would assume that, that at least that section, I'm not asking you to go back and recalculate the rest of the garage, I'm saying I would assume that if I'm adding a hundred spots, I should be adding fifteen percent EV, ten percent make-ready, and five percent at this point would be chargers.
We, we are accounting for the additional spaces on this floor, and tacking fif, and we're applying the fifteen percent. That's where we get our seventeen required spaces.
So I'm a little confused. You're adding just for this floor, but you're taking away from the other floors, because the total number hasn't gone up that much.
So there's a net increase of a hundred and sixteen spaces?
Right.
Fifteen percent of a hundred and sixteen is seventeen point four.
Okay, I'm forgetting about that. So are you adding seventeen point four electric? So you're not adding it?
No.
So.
Under, under the prior application, our obligation to provide electric charging station or EV spaces was zero.
I know, but that was already approved application. So whatever you said you were gonna do, you were doing already. So if, you know, if you said you were gonna put a big sign, whatever that is, that's there already, you can't go back and say, I already did that. This is, this is all new. I would assume anything new, maybe I can get a legal opinion on this, I would assume that you're, whatever you agreed to in the past, you agreed to, and whatever you're adding on now should come under the new law.
Andrew, what you're asking is for fifteen percent of the total parking spaces in the east garage?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not asking them to go back and to assume this is from scratch. I'm asking them to add fifteen percent of what they're adding to whatever they were going to do before in terms of EV, because this is all new.
What was the number you were gonna do before?
There's a total of, how many outside there? Eighty-seven, I believe, in total, fifty in the garage.
So eight, so there was eighty-seven prior, on the prior application?
In total.
Okay, so eighty-seven plus seventeen, is that what you were asking for?
I'm asking for the plus seventeen to, to reply for this new parking that you're putting in.
So, in other, we, we did what we didn't have to do, and now we're being told we have to do what we didn't have to do, plus more.
You've already agreed, you've already agreed to do that.
I know, but I don't understand why we don't get credit for the parking spaces that we already providing.
You know, lots of places have that. It's, you're adding, you're adding a floor. I mean, we could go back and we could say, this is a whole new application, this is a whole new structure, maybe you should look at the whole thing and take the fifteen percent off of that, but I'm trying to say that's, that's not reasonable. I think you should at least look at doing it for that floor.
I have a question.
Wherever you put it.
Andrea, are you saying that they also have to put in the charging stations as for the new law?
Well, the law says that you, this is a fifteen percent, and that five percent of them has to be put in now, the rest are make-ready, and then there's a schedule for putting in the addition.
So of the seventeen parking spaces that they're suggesting that they're doing, you're saying that you want five?
Say five or six, yeah, whatever the rounding number comes into, right. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know.
Andrea, if I may, I, I understand the problem. The other problem is that, you know, technically, under, under that construction, all of those EV charging stations would also have to be on the top floor. So I think, in other words, because the, the prior site plan had already been approved, and those, the existing EV stations have already been designed, presumably, you would have to modify the prior site plan in order to incorporate those, those other EV stations.
We could put them, or they're already putting some up there. So are those new, or are those being included in the original fifty? It sounds like they've already done that, that they've already, there's, I forget, there was a number of, you're putting some on the top floor now, correct?
The fifty's already in, the fifty's done, it's in the five, five stories.
So the sixth story has no charging stations?
No, the, the, the design of the fifty were in the five already. Oh, so it is dispersed. What's the exact total, Dave?
Let me first ask you a question.
The total is fifty, but it's dispersed, equally dispersed on each level of the parking area.
So you've already modified your drawing, because you've taken some off the other floors, and you've put them on the sixth floor now, correct? So it's not like it's a big deal.
So just to believe, how many additional EV parking states, spaces are we actually talking about here, that you would have to add from the, from the existing plan, to comply with the new law?
We don't believe any, but if you looked at the parking that's being required, if this were standalone, it would be seventeen.
Seventeen. And the applicant's not willing to incorporate an additional seventeen EV spaces?
No, we, we already have the eighty-seven, I believe, in total. So that's, we believe that more than satisfies what we would have been required to do, it's beyond.
Okay, I, I disagree, I don't know.
I agree with Andrea, I think you had, you should add, you are adding one hundred and sixty more spaces, so fifteen percent more should be added as EV vehicles on fifth floor, on sixth floor, whatever.
Isn't each floor meant for different sets of people? Right? Like only residents can go to fifth floor, right?
That's correct.
So don't they need their own EV?
As Mister Sobieski indicated, they are dispersed. The fifty are dispersed over the six levels.
So you've already changed all your plans, because you would have had the fifty on the first five levels? So you moved some off of there, you put them on the, on the sixth level, you increased the total amount.
We agreed to do fifty in the garage, and we were sticking by that, and our interpretation is that the law required zero. We did fifty, and now we owe seventeen. I don't know why we don't get credit for the fifty that we're doing.
Here, here's the issue, I, I think. In every application that comes before the board, we always try to improve the kind of, or add conditions to provide EV stations, charging spaces, and so on, either solar, right? We always try to do that. So the fact that zero was, was required, and you gave us fifty, we probably would have asked you for more than fifty. So you kinda got ahead of us there by, by giving us fifty. If, 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 if the application would have came after the law was passed, it would be a lot more than fifty, and a lot more than eighty-seven, right?
It would be fifteen percent of the total.
Okay, so which is a lot more, right? So I guess what Andrea and Anissa, and I probably, I could read the minds of the other board members, is it pretty decent compromise to add additional seventeen to the existing application? I think that's pretty good compromise, the fact that, you, you know, yeah, you gave us fifty when zero were required? I don't know, am I, am I reading the room correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, doesn't it make business sense to add those?
I mean, it's a lot cheaper now to add, add that make-ready than it's gonna be later. As you said, you get one chance to build this garage.
Yes, I, I understand what the board's saying, just think, under the statute, we're just, I don't know why we're not entitled to the credit, that's, and I did discuss this matter previously, not with Martina.
Well, Rick, I'm gonna have to defer to the board on this one. I, I think, because if this were a standalone application, it's, it's amended, I understand that, but this board isn't treating the, the EV stations, stations that you're already providing as credit. They're looking at this as additional parking that generates a new EV requirement.
Exactly. And I'll just, I'll just reiterate, you, you came, zero was required, we would have probably said, hey, where's our EV stations? And you would have said, you know what, I'll give you fifty, I'll give you eighty-seven, or whatever the number is, that we would have agreed to. But now you're coming before the board and say, hey, you know that eighty-seven you voted on? Those don't really count, because it was really zero. So I don't really, you know, I'm gonna just give you the seventeen, but I'm taking it away from previous. It's not, it's not gonna work here.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, in fairness, it's not as if, if you recall during the hearings, we, we were providing EV. Now, had I known, you know, at the time, that we would have gone and sought more parking, maybe the number would have been ninety, would have been, maybe it still would have been eighty-seven, because that would have been enough at that point, you know? So I, I think it's unfair to, you know, to us to say that we're now, you know, trading against our original deal in the sense that we weren't working from the presumption we owed any, and we still gave eighty-seven. And now we're not getting credit for that, and it's being perceived by the board here that we're trying to pull a fast one, and that's just not the case. I mean, we had an obligation of zero, and we thought we were doing the right thing, providing eighty-seven. And eighty-seven is still a lot of EV spaces, whether you put another floor on here or not.
You've got, was it four hundred-something homes here? That's, that's not a lot. I mean, take, take a ride around West Windsor, there's a lot of EVs here, and, and somebody moves to West Windsor, they're gonna wanna buy an EV.
All right, we'll provide the extra seventeen spaces, and it's subject to obviously the same phase-in, so the total, the additional units are still gonna be subject to the same phase-in as the statute, correct? It's not as if we need to deliver this in any accelerated fashion, correct?
No, it would be whatever the current law is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to, not to get too technical, but the applicant had proposed fifty with this application, where there's forty-seven, so in order to get that seventeen, it's really an additional fourteen more EV spaces now. Wanted to throw that out for the record. And again, this is David Novak for the record, I was sworn in at the last application. Hopefully everybody remembers me. Thank you for the correction, Dave.
Okay, Martina, you have that, you have that as a condition?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please continue.
Okay.
So in addition to the garage story, a solar photovoltaic canopy will also be installed on the roof of the garage. As noted in the planner's letter, the canopy does not count towards the garage's height, since it is classified as equipment associated with the garage.
What is the new, what is the new height versus the old height?
Of the garage?
Yes, please.
It, it's under the permitted height of seventy feet.
Okay, so there's a permitted height of seventy feet, and the previous height was how much? I didn't see that, I apologize if it's there.
So the original height was roughly fifty-four, and it went up to about sixty-four.
Okay, so you're adding, you're adding ten feet on, not counting the solar panels?
The solar panels will be in addition to that sixty-four.
Okay.
Excuse me, which sheet in this handout shows the?
Speaking to the mic, Alan, please.
Which sheet in the handout shows the elevation of it, of the building with the height noted?
It's in the plan set.
Well, I'm asking you to provide that.
Yeah, in the, in the slide deck, there's no perspective, it's in the plan set. The, the perspective we gave was the, you see on the, where it says the east garage, and on the right, you see the building, because it's, this is the building that's, the garage is still wrapped. So we thought that the picture that's up on the display gave you the best illustration of what we're dealing with. That's the old plan set, so you're, you're dealing with another, to the chairman's question, you're dealing with additional height on this, but this, this is the building in which it's located, so we thought that was a more helpful illustration. The plan set will show you the, how the solar panels are set on top, and it's got the, the details, but for presentation purposes, we thought that this best illustrated the garage location and kind of how this garage works in relation to the building.
And in terms of relation to the building, I mean, looking at the perspective drawings, how high, how much further in height is the garage as opposed to residential buildings?
About ten feet.
About ten feet. And in terms of visibility, that from, in terms of visibility from the roads, it will be quite visible?
Yeah, it wouldn't, I'll have Mister Constantine address that when, when he gets into, he, he can touch on that, but not to spoil the ending, but visibility from the street will be impossible.
Impossible.
If you're standing on the street to see the parking deck, as he'll explain, it's...
Okay, well, we'll hear it from your planner.
Yep.
All right, so in addition to the garage, we also identified a temporary sales trailer and construction trailer for the Pulte parcel. These trailers are shown in red and will be temporarily located in the place of Building Three. In addition to these trailers, temporary signage, temporary sidewalks to provide access to the model units, and a temporary parking lot will be constructed northwest of the sales trailer for visitors.
So those are really the, what we'll call the site plan issues that Mister Sobieski wanted to address relative to the garage and those construction and sales trailer, that the balance of the application deals with signage, and at that point, I'd like to turn it over to Mister Constantine.
Richard, is there, for the Atria element and the Avalon element, is there any type of a need, maybe sales is not the word, but, you know, temporary, just for the rentals or whatever, you know, pre-occupancy, pre-building opening?
There'd be a leasing office in the building, so there'd be no need for a standalone sales trailer. I imagine Atria functions pretty much the same. So if I could call Mister Constantine and start going through the signage, he'll also address the question of the parking garage as well.
Sure. Do you have, so you had?
I just, we haven't gone through our reports from our consultants.
Yeah, we will do that after the applicant presents.
So if I wanted to question something about the parking garage after, if I could come back to that.
Well, if it's relevant right now to the testimony, you can ask the question, and, you know, if one of our consultants need to answer it, or, you know, it's fine.
The consultant I need to answer it is not here, but I have a question, maybe, John, maybe you can help. The parking garage is gonna be sixty-four feet high. Does the township have enough fire equipment and emergency equipment to handle a fire on the top of a six-story building? I see that the, I know Jeff commented that he's deferring to emergency services on that, and the fire marshal said he had no comments regarding the revisions. I just question whether you have a fire, one car, two cars, three cars on the top level, how's that gonna be handled by a fire truck? Do we have the equipment necessary for that? Do we have the equipment necessary for that?
Ma'am, there's a fire, uh, fire connection port at the bottom of the garage where, um, in the event of a fire, the fire department would connect, and there's stand pipes throughout the garage, and it'd be sprinkler.
The top floor is sprinkler?
Correct.
Is it covered, then? It's sprink, it's sprinkler?
Will, will that be sufficient for the, for the solar panel?
I apologize, the sixth floor is not.
See, I'm concerned about that sixth floor, obviously you could reach up to the fifth floor, I'm sure with our equipment. John, I don't know if you have any comment on that or not.
Yeah, I'm actually not sure if we have equipment specifically to fight a fire on the sixth floor. The emergency services did review this amended application, and we don't have any comments saying that they don't.
I think it would be very beneficial if we had the representative from the emergency services here to answer the question. He says it in writing, but he hasn't heard the presentation.
Right.
But he has reviewed the plans.
Yeah, there will still be a fire code review for this building prior to building permits being issued. So, uh, from that perspective, fire and emergency services have another review cycle for this building.
But if we approve it, then it's done, and.
Nope, no.
They won't issue a permit if it's not safe.
You can make it as a condition that the building per, it reviews for emergency services on the sixth floor.
Right, I would suggest that would be a good condition to make.
Yeah, I mean, specifically the fire marshal has to.
And make sure that they do consider the solar panels as part of that, too.
Right.
Yeah, it's a valid concern, it's, it's definitely a valid concern.
Because it could be one car, it could be cars all parked close together, and you could have three or four cars on fire. And what do you do?
Right.
Your fifth floor is sprinkled, but your top floor isn't, and those are residential units.
Right, sure.
Okay, yeah, can I just ask a follow-up question to that? Floors one through five are spring, you know, regular sprinkle system, right? Is that, you know, for emergency services, you know, a fire goes on, sprinkler gets hit with, you know, heat, and it goes off, right?
It's no.
That, that's a no?
No. It's a garage, so I don't know if there actually are sprinklers on some of those.
So that's a dry system that the fire department would have a connection to, and they would provide pressure to that fire system?
I mean, I, I remember discussion when Princeton University came for the garage. There was a discussion about, because the height of the garage is not sufficient for the fire engine to go through.
And also it's open.
Yeah, so there was some discussion about.
So, so the fire department hooks up water, the water pressure, you know, pushes out through this, you know, this, it's an automatic sprinkler system. So you, uh, you're saying the sixth floor has the same, the same, um, you know, type of sprinklers? Or no, it doesn't?
It'll have the same type of fire protection. I mean, the reality is that fire protection is a code issue, right? So this is a subgroup of the construction code. For us to build a parking garage, we gotta provide life and fire and safety insurance, assurances. It's gonna be reboot, reviewed by your code section, and if it doesn't comply with code, it does not get approved. And a part of any code consideration, it's gonna be fire suppression.
Okay, so it'll be a condition, whether it's the same or not, it'll be a condition of a, uh, occupancy?
Yeah, just like the, the first garage was, we're stuck with the same thing on the first garage.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Konstantin, if you could provide your professional educational background, please?
I have a BA with high honors in urban studies from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-eight. I've also worked in thirty other states as a professional planner, uh, throughout Canada and in Latin America. I've worked on redevelopment projects as a planner in Hightstown, um, in Princeton, the shopping center most recently, uh, and serve as the planner for a couple of municipalities in New Jersey, here before many boards, uh, including this board, where I've been qualified before.
Is your license current in New Jersey?
It is.
Okay, can you run it? So, affirmed.
Mr. Konstantin, before you get to the signage, a question came up about visibility of the parking garage. You heard the question, if you're on, if you're on the road in the community, is the parking garage, the additional floor, is it visible?
Right, from the street, and I think if we can go back to that, uh, one rendering, uh, you basically have at the sidewalk, a four-story building wall that you see pictured on the right. The edge of the garage from the sidewalk, if we do a horizontal measurement, is generally anywhere from forty to sixty feet. So the pedestrian is forty to sixty feet away, but through four stories of the building, so it's impossible to see, even with the increased height, to see that garage from the street level.
And from the cars driving along, uh, the street, Washington?
Or the cars driving along the street.
Along Washington, the, the street that's right?
At some point, as you get further away, you will see things like the solar panels.
Now, there are parapet walls on the, uh, on the apartments, I believe. At least from the, from the picture, that's what it, it looks like, is that correct?
Yes, there are some in cornice conditions that varies around the buildings.
This is showing that it runs the entire width of the garage, if you can turn to that. I was just curious as to what the height of the parapet walls are. Is that, in a sense, would help to buffer the view of cars?
No, it's really the facade wall that will do that for the pedestrian at the street level.
From the road, I forgot the pedestrian, saying from a car on Washington, because I believe the parapet wall would be helpful. My question is, is that a correct rendering, number one? And number two, what is the height of the parapet wall?
This, this isn't, this is a rendering on the right from our original submission, so it's not showing the increased height of the garage or the solar panels above.
Oh, I'm sorry, so this is not what you're proposing. So what you're proposing, you're giving us a photo of what has been approved, and you don't have any kind of rendering showing what the garage would be above that?
We have, we have elevation drawings in the package that was submitted.
But, you know, they were really handy to look at, but what would have really been helpful is had you, you have this elevation that you showed of the apartment, it would have been nice to see the garage and how that protruded above that. Because I don't think you really get a sense of what, I, I can't get a sense of what it is we're looking at, or what we're gonna be.
Right, you, you do have the garage go beyond it, but it's, um, basically forty feet back from the face of the building, so it's, uh, the elevations are a distorted view?
Well, I understand that, it would have been helpful had you given us the best possible view, and we really haven't, and I, I just, I'm not satisfied with what you provided here.
And I'm, I'm not as concerned about whether a car drives by on Washington and sees the roof, but you're, that particular garage is right near the corner where we have a residential neighborhood. Are they going to now be seeing those, um, you know, the top of your roof where they would not have been seeing it before? You have a, there's a residential neighborhood like Fieldston and that whole area off of Washington Road behind it, behind you, on that, there. Are they going to be able to see this parking garage from their homes?
Further, further west on Washington Road.
Yeah, towards Route One slightly, on the other side of, yeah, not where the tennis buildings are, but the neighborhoods that are behind Washington Road. They, they abut to where the dinky tracks are right now, there's several neighborhoods.
I think you're getting to an area that's probably a third to a half a mile away.
So is that something where they're gonna now see, see this?
Uh, I don't know that they actually will, there, you know, there's gonna be glimpses from a distance that you can get at different places. You'll see part, you'll see these buildings most clearly from the station platform, but I think from that neighborhood, I believe a lot of it between mature vegetation and distance that it is, that it will be pretty hard to see.
Jim, in your experience as a planner, there are views that can be taken to scale, correct? You know, the object, and then what you're proposing, a sightline, have, has anybody done that?
We have not done that from the distant view, no. It's you, uh, we understood your policy, your goal was to encourage the photovoltaic panels on the roof.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, what you said.
Yeah, we understand that the, the policy was to really try to encourage to have the PV panels on the roof.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying that I think the sightline drawing would have been very helpful, including what I talked about before.
Right.
I, I can't get a real sense of what the garage, another story, and they're gonna basically just see cars on the roof.
Just a question for the board, are we talking about the residential neighborhood along Fieldston Road?
Yeah, yep.
So don't.
That's on the other side.
Yeah, don't forget, there's gonna be the Atria Building.
So there's probably gonna be a bunch of tall buildings.
I don't think you're gonna be from the Fieldston Road.
Yeah, I'm looking at the other map.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna be able to see the solar panel panels from there.
Yeah, I mean, I do like having the solar panels, but, um, I, I just wanna make sure they're not like an eyesore.
I, you had the Atria Building, do you remember how tall the Atria Building is? Sorry, I put you on the spot.
But, but again, also to just keep in perspective, we are within the height limit.
Can you speak into the mic?
But by the way, would, uh, you wanna share with us, uh, what you're gonna do with the solar power? Is that gonna power the garage and selling it, or you're just curious?
The common areas of the buildings are being powered by the solar panels.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Any, any additional testimony? Okay. Anything we got in the, anything about the garage, anybody? Okay. Okay, please continue.
Signs, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, uh, just to get everybody started, there's no page numbers, but on page five, there's an overall signage plan, so the board required, uh, it's indicated that we come back with a complete, a package of signs, which we are this evening. The redevelopment plan indicates that all signs within the project area shall be part of an overall total design scheme, and in keeping with the architectural character of the district, what we intend to present tonight will show you that we have prepared and designed a consistent design vocabulary of style, materials, colors, and lighting for all of the signs. The standards in the ordinance don't cover, uh, most of what we're presenting tonight, so we do need exceptions, particularly for the ground-mounted signs, uh, which include the gateway, informational, um, there's directional signs, monument signs, all of those need exception signs that provide information on the garages. Also, we have, uh, the, the signs help to identify and landmark the entire community and function as wayfinding to make it easier and safer for everyone to get around, and that promotes public safety, not just for vehicles, uh, but also for pedestrians, as motorists can more easily find their place that they may be going to visit, uh, or park on the site. And it also helps in terms of residents of the community, uh, citizens of West Windsor, visitors, customers to any of the businesses, delivery vehicles. So we're gonna jump into the wayfinding and informational on the next page. Uh, you see in blue all of those identified, I'm gonna start with the one on the upper right labeled gateway monument sign. This is, if you turn to the next page, a freestanding two-sided sign. This is our largest sign, it's out near the roundabout, it's the most public. Uh, it really is a landmark sign, um, in terms of identifying this community. This is a mixed-use community, so the signage has to do a mixed-use function, so it's not just identifying businesses, but also the type, the residents that are there, and providing the community name. It sets the design vocabulary that you'll see on other signs for, that are ground-mounted, in terms of a stylized frame, sign panels and openings, and the openings in the signboard, so it's not completely solid. If you look up there, everything that you see in white between the different elements allow for depth, depth and shadow, and will also make it more interesting visually when it's lit at night. The, uh, the, the, the concept is a contemporary woodgrain finish material frame along with black and steel. That's really what's framing the sign. And you'll see with the other freestanding ground-mounted signs, charcoal metal is used for the sign panels. The community name is vertical on the side, and there are push-through illuminated dimensional letters on the individual sign plates. The community name will be, um, uplit from off. This sign sits four feet off the ground in the basin. Uh, it does have fence and landscaping around it, and we know that, uh, there were five signs that I think Mr. Dobromylski in his review noted may have some visibility conflicts. I know Mr. Novak noted that there should be landscaping along the base. We're willing to work with the, the professionals to adjust landscaping as needed. We have, um, you know, over, almost three hundred ninety-three trees and over five thousand shrubs. We're not gonna lose one piece of landscaping for these signs, we're just going to adjust the plans to accommodate them properly and deal with those issues.
Jim?
Yes.
The, uh, illumination of this gateway monument sign, is that entire evening hours from dawn to dusk, or is it limited to when the stores are open?
Well, it's, it's not just for stores, though, it's also for the community. So it's identifying the name of the community, it's also identifying Avalon, Atria, and Pulte as the three residential components at the top of the sign. So it's really serving a mixed-use function, but most importantly, identity for the community, so I, I believe this is going to be lit.
So it will be lit all through the overnight?
Through the dark, yes. And it's important, again, as you'll see in some of the next few's.
Now, the, the border of such sign, that does not have an illuminated component, does it, or does it not? It's just the, the lettering of.
The lettering of the individual sign plates, and then the, the W squared on the side will have illumination.
But not the rectangular frame?
Not the, the, the frame won't be lit, no.
Thank you.
Correct.
So even the lettering on the W squared, that will be, those are the only parts that will be lit as well? The lettering. The lettering, I'm sorry, the lettering on the W squ, uh, which says W squared, each letter will be illuminated?
Yeah, that's going to be uplit.
Okay, so that'll be uplit, the others will be.
Yes.
Internally.
Right, so that, that whole side element that you see in the dark metal, W squared, will have some light washing it. The others will just be the letters within those, uh, gray metal panels. There's dimensions provided on the next page, and, and basically it's, uh, and you'll see, we're gonna compare this with some other existing signs. It's twelve foot, one inches wide, uh, twenty foot tall, it sits four feet off the ground, again, in the basin with landscaping in its base, and we'll give you a comparison to some other signs. Again, it's not solid within those dimensions. On the next page, we have one of our, uh, renderings of the sign on the right. So this is, uh, you can see a little view triangle in the upper left, this is coming down Washington Road. Actually, the, the truck in the far background of this visual would actually be up on the, the bridge, so it's, it's a little bit of a, um, just a presentation of the, um, the sign in landscaping, go to the next page. We have a view coming off the bridge at the roundabout, and you see the sign, uh, over there at the left, uh, again, in relation, and we really tried to design it both to work in terms of a vehicular identity, but also in terms at a pedestrian scale. And if we turn to the next page, we take these two renderings. and, and more or less compare them to the photo, a photograph, looking at the area where they would be. Now, because the, the entire area is going to be redesigned, that, you know, terrible intersection that everybody has lived with for so long. The sign A on the left will actually be located at the far left of that photograph in an area of woods. So there will be backdrop of trees, you won't see as much sky as our rendering depicts. And in the view, B, again, there's a grade change coming down off the bridge as well. And so that's again, part of the reason for the height, you want to make sure motorists have an awareness coming in from a distance in both directions. And then the next sheet, over on Princeton Heights Town Road across the bridge, there are existing signs, ground mounted, that, you know, we would not be, we would be designing something that we think is unique and we really think is meets the, the spirit of the ordinance, although you don't have standards, by really trying to design it in a way that's got a stylized frame, not just signage panels, lit in a very dynamic way and set in a landscape base. But there are, there are signs that are similar size nearby.
Interesting, interesting you say this, Jim, one of the jokes of West Windsor Township is that at driving speed on the Ellsworth Village sign, you cannot read what the different vendors are. You just can't. And that's like, so we do need to take into consideration the, the visibility driving it, driving speeds. Sam, Sam, question for you. The, the, the sign that we're talking about, the W squared sign in character looks similar to, in its own way, to the new Market Fair sign on Highway One Southbound. Do we know by comparison, the height, do we remember the, by comparison, the height of the Market Fair sign?
Curtis, are you talking about the existing sign out there, the one you recently approved? That you recently approved?
Yeah, that, yeah, it was, I think our board looked at this, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But I can't remember the size of that sign.
I can't either, I'm reviewing it, part of the building department review, I can't remember the height of that either. Dave, do you know?
I could certainly get it up, I have it in my notes, so.
If, if, if it's possible to find out for comparison, I'd like that.
But on the safety issue, we only have, just flip back if we could, Louie, we only have five of our businesses have location on the sign. So there may be more than five businesses, but that's really what it's set for. So we won't have the problem that you just pointed out. And we think it's scaled in an appropriate way, both visibility coming up Washington Road and coming off the bridge to provide safety. So there are no standards for this type of sign in this district, and that's why we've had a, proposed this with an exception.
Are these signs to also provide directions? Like go to the right, go to the left? I don't see any arrows.
It's not a go to the right, go to the left. This one really serves the purpose of kind of landmarking the community at the entry. And as we, we move through, I think we've really tried to design the, the signage to be, it's, it's all wayfinding, but it's really done in a way that you can use your intuition and spot the signs and not necessarily have to have directional.
So you don't need to like have a right, an arrow pointing to the right or to the left? You just know these are the thing, these are the stores and, and if you continue, these are the stories you're going to find.
Correct, especially since it's occurring out at the new roundabout, so.
Yeah, you, you've put a 24-foot sign at the roundabout in the entrance to the main part of West Windsor. And it's right at the edge of this roundabout and it doesn't even say whether to go right, left, go over the bridge. It's, it's one, it's kind of confusing and two, it almost looks like that's the name of the town. I'm, I'm just look, I mean, I understand most of your directional signs and why they're useful and why I wouldn't want somebody to turn left instead of right. But this particular one, it just seems more like a bragging sign. It's a, hey, we, we took over sign. Basically, at this new, new main circle at the entrance to West Windsor, and it doesn't really say which direction or how somebody to go, how somebody would actually go if they wanted to get to any of these stores or, or neighborhoods or anything.
So it's, it's actually going to be, I think, pretty intuitively simple because there is only one way in from the roundabout in, right where the sign is, so.
But there's more ways you can go from the roundabout, you can.
Well, you can go, you can continue and go past it, or you could circle around the roundabout if you realized you missed the turn and come back in. I've experienced that on a roundabout from time to time.
I, I would wonder why Road A doesn't, doesn't have a sign.
But there's only one, there's only one road in that this sign is marking.
Can I ask one other question? Where that gateway sign is, if I'm coming from Princeton and I see that sign right here, you've got a crosswalk right next to it. Is that going to interfere with the sightline for the crosswalk?
No.
Because you're making a turn and then there's a crosswalk.
Yeah, we, if we go to the next page, we actually have a exhibit here which shows that we are, the sign is out of, out of the site triangle and so is that crosswalk.
Okay.
Mr. Constantine, I, I love the sign, I think it looks fantastic. And I love, I have like Market Fairs as well. Just promise me, when I look at the Ori Mark, Herb Seizner's property and I see that standard green placard, please tell me that you'll permit your tenants to use their own identity and their own marketing branding? Because I think that if, you may not have national tenants, but you have, you know, probably regional and local tenants that need to be distinguished.
So on our signplates, they're gray metal and the signs will punch letters through and those letters will be lit. So each will look slightly unique, even though the consistency is the gray panel, gray metal panel on which each of those tenants sits.
So, and I know it's a stretch, but if there were a large national retailer that wanted to be there, they would have to exist in the same manner as these other tenants?
Yes, they would have to fit within the panels that we proposed tonight, those dimensions.
Fair enough, thank you.
Well, Curtis, just to answer your question, the Market Fair pylon signs had a height of 20 feet.
Which is similar to this.
Comparable, I believe they're proposing 21.
And your, your proposal again is 20?
21, I believe.
24 when you take it to.
In terms of the character of this sign, I understand the applicant's approach. Similar to, similar to Market Fair, this, this pylon sign is announcing the presence of the retailers. Example, like on the Market Fair sign, yes, it says AMC Theaters. It doesn't tell you how to get to the back of the, of the, the Market Fair Center because it's the most distant major from Highway One, the AMC Theaters. But it sort of announces the presence. So I understand the approach of the applicant as that for this particular sign, the Gateway Monument Sign, that it's more announcing presence than providing wayfinding.
Correct, correct, the landmark sign. Okay, so now we're going to advance on and go to our first directional sign, which is at the corner of Washington Road and I believe it's Nash Avenue. Just lost it on the screen. We have provided the rendering that we had when we were here last time and where our thinking was on signage to show you that as a point of where we evolved to. So we had a ground mounted sign that said W squared at that corner turning in. And we have that older rendering right here. So what we've actually done is we've reduced the signage, made it more pedestrian scale and brought it from the wall mounted sign into a ground mounted sign that's much smaller in dimension. Screen here in a second, it's on the page after that. It has a, an internally illuminated logo for the project. At the top of the sign, you can see those sort of interlocking diamonds. It has a, this one has a non-illuminated directional panel that is on it with, with arrows below it. And you can see with the pedestrian scale next to it, it's very much a pedestrian scale. So we reduce signage, we've opened it up. That will allow more landscape to be visible at this intersection. And we think it's just a more appropriate lighter approach. The sign also includes a wood grain material frame with the black steel, so it's the same design vocabulary that you just saw on the gateway sign. It's carrying it into the community and you'll see that on others. Again, there are no standards for this, we need an exception. And it is pretty much at a modest pedestrian scale. The dimensions that we have on, it's the next page. Basically, it's three foot, three inches wide. And to the top of the logo, it's six foot, six. So it's very much pedestrian scaled, but also works at the level of motorists that's slowing down. It's a different experience than what you see out at the roundabout coming in. Our next signs are on the garages. There are three instructional signs, which really are. Go to the next slide. These locations, so these are considered wall mounted, they're, they're basically above the entry to the garage. You can see on the next page, and they identify on the west garage, Atria and Avalon. And on the east garage, it indicates Avalon. Signs sit on painted aluminum above the garage entries. You can see they're scaled and they're proportionate to the openings. And also the, from these signs, they include hanging entrance and exit clearance bars below them. So these are effective and necessary for safe vehicular circulation. Again, the ordinance is silent, that's why we're proposing them and seeking exception. There are no standards for these, but obviously they're necessary. Next, we're going to go on to the promenade monument signs. So these are also one at the north and one at the south of the promenade. See here that they basically use as a truss structure. And we'll go into those in a second by looking actually first at what we had proposed when we were here on the original site plan approval. Again, we had a ground mount, a, a wall with a sign affixed to it on the ground in front of this. And what we decided to do was add landscaping, lift and lighten the signs onto the structure. I also wanted to put out, point out one other thing. Very far left of that rendering, there was a banner sign that says Avalon. And that's the last sign that we'll be presenting this evening. And that actually is the only sign that there are standards for. We don't seek, seek, seek an exception, just showing it to you for design. So these signs are constructed of steel truss structures that, yeah. They're really open air accessory structures. One is at each end of the promenade. Sinage is mounted on a steel crossbeam. And there are, again, sign panels for five tenants, eight square foot per tenant. Again, trying to help identify the retail activity and the businesses, that's 40 square feet collectively for those. Again, there were no standards for these freestanding signs. But we think it's a, an improved approach that results in a lot more landscape that you tend to the promenade than having a wall mounted sign. So here's what's proposed now, it would be additional landscaping below the signs. We're really setting in in a bed. Up above the, the community name is identified in, in letters that would be lit. And then we have signage across the steel beam for the five commercial tenants. And that would also be lit from a wash light that would a downlight onto those. But the, all, none of these are internally illuminated letters, they're all lit externally. We can show you the other end of the promenade, so we can show the both ends with that signage. And then one other point. Lastly, on the lighting, that Laura indicated, again, the facelit, the project identity sign and then tenant signs, and they're also with signage for Avalon, Atria and Pulte on the inside of that steel beam facing internal to the promenade on each of these.
Jim, could you go back a couple of slides to the garage signs, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So how does a retail customer, non-resident, know that he or she can park in the garage?
Well, first, the retail customers have the ability to park on street, which our experience working in many downtowns and living in downtowns, most retail customers generally would prefer to park on street if they can. So both on, if we go back maybe to the plan view, both on Nash Avenue as well as on the promenade, there is on-street parking that would get you closer to the door of any business that you may be going to.
Very good, and, and if the, the retailers are going to have a booming success and one would need to park in the parking garage because all those street spots are full, how does the driver know to be able to park in the garage? The, how does the signage help the driver in this situation?
If, if we, if we need additional signage, we will have to come back and show you how that would be addressed.
Thank you.
Regarding, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you go back to the previous slide about the two garages? Yeah, so the two entrances of the garage have different heights. One shows 11, one shows 7.6.
Correct.
Okay. Because I think 7.6, some of the vans won't be able to go through. The newer vans where you can stand up.
Right, well, there, there will be bars, warning bars and signage to that effect, like any garage.
Regarding street parking, it's pretty close to the train station and the, the surface parking at the train station. Although in recent post-pandemic, the lot of spots are open. However, you still have to pay for daily parking there where street parking in front of these stores would be free. So how do you can control that?
Yeah, we're, we're still working on that, but there will be some sort of a delineation or, or signage or charge for those spaces.
Will they be needed parking?
And enforcement.
Is it needed parking, 30-minute limit, you know?
We're still working with the issue of, it's not just us.
I understand, it, it's, it's my opinion that you should figure it out sooner rather than later because people go back to the office, the parking lots start to fill up. Guess what, they're going to start, in other Avalon properties, they, they used to park inside the developments. You know, and take the bus to the train station. This is even closer, they could walk to the train station, so you should think about it.
Thank, thank you. Okay, so we finished the promenade signs, now we're going to go on to the Pulte and Atria signs. So in green, you can see here, there are six signs proposed for Pulte, basically three pairs. And these do also help deal with some of the potential poaching because they're marking both ends of the street that the townhomes front into as well as an entry into one of the rear parking areas, the alley and parking lots. And they occur on both sides of the street. Again, they use the same design vocabulary as the other ground mounted signs with the wood grain material in the black and steel. Very subtle pedestrian scale, three foot, two inches wide, three foot, seven inches tall, five feet off the ground. They're obviously along the sidewalks at the ends of the street. They're meant to, they're meant to be enough of an identification to indicate private. We need to absolutely be a little more careful with the on-street parking in this area because of the types of homes and the usage. So guests and residents can park in there.
So are you restricting travel on those streets to private? When you put private people through private streets?
When you put private people through private street?
They can drive, it's open.
So.
It's a private street that you can drive through.
So it is, it's a public street in terms of being able to drive on it?
Publicly accessible, correct.
So it's more like parking is for residents and guests only, but.
Correct.
But people shouldn't feel they can't go through it.
Correct.
So will residents have like stickers or decals inside their car that designates that they're a resident, that they could park on the street?
Yes, there will be some, some system that will be worked out for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we recognize that there's potential for commuters to come in and poach spaces and they get very creative.
So there'll be signage on those streets. I, I don't know if that's your responsibility or the town's responsibility to put signs at resident parking only.
I mean, we don't, we don't have any paid parking in West Windsor. And we just have no, I mean, no parking between certain hours on certain streets. But we don't have paid parking. I mean, close to the train station, certain streets have restrictions of no parking within certain hours. But there's no paid parking.
Maybe that, maybe that something needs to be considered?
We're going to have to consider all of that.
Right.
I, I mean, one of the options is to work with the parking authority because they have enforcement agents and they do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that handles the Pulte signs. And now we're off to Atria. And they have two wall mounted signs and then one ground mounted sign in front of the building. So if you go to the next page, see a close up. And the first sign at the top, halo letters says Atria Senior Living. It's on the face of the building. Second sign is halo letters on a metal panel attached to the building. And those will both have some subtle, some subtle lighting. And then the third sign at the bottom sits inside the horseshoe driveway or semi-circular driveway in front of the building. And it sits down at the ground level. Again, it uses the same freestanding design vocabulary of the wood, wood grain material, the black metal panel, and identifies the front of the building. And it's fairly small in size, four foot tall, six foot wide, 24 square feet. To just identify that that's where a guest or a ride share service or pickup drop offs would occur in a more public location.
Where you're using West Windsor everywhere, why using Princeton Junction on the Atria sign?
Question, why does it say Princeton Junction versus?
On the, on the bottom too.
The Atria, the bottom Atria sign.
Yeah. Okay, so you wouldn't.
Sorry ma'am, can, can you just give us your name? Okay, if you could just raise your right hand and swear affirm that the testimony you just gave is the truth. Thank you, Laura Miller. Thanks.
So can we make that a condition or make sure that it's West Windsor everywhere?
Yes.
Consistent?
That brings us to one last sign. Does not require an exception. You actually do have this handled in the ordinance. And this is the Avalon banner sign. So this is a aluminum sign. It's three foot, three inches wide, 21 feet tall. It extends a total of four feet from the building. It's painted aluminum, painted aluminum panel. The logo and the letters are water jet cut, painted and will protrude, protrude. The letters will protrude a half an inch off the sign. The lighting occurs from an LED code that's on the, it would be the far right would be on the building side of the sign. And you won't see that, but it'll just wash light vertically across the whole sign, be very elegant. And, and have a sort of a town center feeling as you're coming around the corner and sort of visible both from the promenade and from Nash Avenue approaching that corner. So it's again, we think part of the whole landmarking and wayfinding throughout the community. And again, that one is conforming. So. Sure, so just to, to touch on the exceptions that we need. In NJ SA 40:55 D-51B, the planning board does have the power to grant exceptions that may be reasonable within the general purpose and intent. Site plan review, if the literal enforcement of one or more provisions, the ordinance is impractical or will exact undue hardship because of kill your conditions. So we have a whole series of signs, except for the banner, that basically aren't covered and dealt with with any standards in the ordinance. And it certainly has evolved. There are lots of sign standards for ground floor commercial. And if, if this was a sort of a downtown where everything was commercial on the ground floor, there would be a lot more signage and it would be on the walls of the building in other ways. But as the plan and the uses have evolved, we really feel that what we have designed meets the, the intent, which is to have a, a design that's part of the overall design scheme for the architectural character of the community. We've obviously stylized the signs and tried to keep them somewhat consistent. They're modest and we think generally pedestrian scale. And they also promote the public good. As they're necessary to provide wayfinding for patrons, residents, guests, so that they can safely circulate through the proposed community and efficiently locate where they're going or to park. So simply put, there are no provisions for these signs. That's why we've proposed them. Those exceptions, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, Rob? Yeah.
Go ahead, Rob.
I don't want to get yelled at again, I'm going to put it right here. So I'm always nervous about retail in settings like this. Can you remind me the number of square feet that?
21,000.
And have you, as you've been marketing this project, have you had success and preliminary interest from?
We haven't, the real marketing for the retail hasn't even.
So it hasn't started yet?
Right.
Okay, do you have any concerns about that 20,000 square feet being leased over time?
No, in part, well, you, you always worry, especially in the current climate. But one of the revisions that was made to this zone was to actually reduce the retail out of that very concern. Originally, this zone called for a lot more retail.
7,000.
Yes, and, and that was pushed down in part from the reality of you, you don't want empty storefronts, right? So that number was reduced. And you know, we're, we're comfortable and confident, once these uses come online, that it, it'll be vibrant. It'll be sustained. But in the current environment, it's getting a little better. But as you know, from COVID, you know, retail and everything, it's, it is struggling. But we, we're hopeful and confident really that this is probably the right number.
All right, thank you. No, okay. We're going to have our professionals kind of go through it. David, you want to take it off?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Once again, this is Dave Novak for the record. Purchase Associates, the township planning consultant, and a memo dated June 8th, 2022. And Rob, just to follow up on your question regarding the total amount of commercial space of 21,000 square feet and change. I believe part of that also includes some medical facilities in the Atria building as well, if I recall correctly. So I think the total amount of retail space that's going to be along that promenade will actually be less than 21,000 square feet. And again, one of the concerns that we had when we revised the ordinance to reduce that amount of retail space was the amount of retail space proposed elsewhere in the township as well and trying to reduce competition and not have so many vacant spaces in this development.
So now I'm a lot less worried because medical retail like that will thrive with this number of units, these number of units and square foot.
I, I can't hear you.
Yeah, so now I'm less concerned. I think medical will do very well in a setting like that. So if that eats into the 20,000 square feet, I worry less.
I just wanted to confirm with Atria, right? There is a medical or some sort of service space in that building? Okay, just good. Yes, sometimes my memory lapses after application and application. Just a couple of questions and thank you very much. I believe you covered a lot of the items in my memo. I was discussing with our engineer, the proposed monument sign near the roundabout in the basin. So that basin does descend fairly quickly. I think it goes, drops down to about six feet or so. So there is a chance that the sign base might be greater than four feet, which is what's shown in the plan, which would mean that the overall height of the sign might be greater. The, the visual impact would likely remain the same. But I just want to throw it out there that if that sign is going in a basin and that basin drops down that quickly, you might have a taller base. Okay, so it might make sense for the board to consider, for a very technical term, wiggle room with that waiver requirement. That way, if they, you know, if it's just a 24 square, 24 foot tall sign, but it is put in a six foot basin, it might not necessarily be entirely visible from the, the roadway. So you want that base, you want to allow for that base to be a little bit taller?
Yeah, so the waiver, I guess, would be 20 feet from, I don't know, I knew braids not the right word.
20, yeah, that'd be a good way to phrase it, 20, 20 feet above the top of basin.
Yes.
Okay.
Or 20 foot above the railing of the basin.
20, okay, 20 feet above the railing of the basin. Okay.
So from the height, well, you know what, then here. Okay, let me hit that. Okay, we'll get back to that refined language. Another question too regarding the poultry entry signs. You might have touched upon this and if you did, I apologize. But the rationale for having two signs at each driveway was what again?
Well, one is the driveway, the other is the street.
Yes, I'm sorry, the, yeah.
Yeah, but that's sort of a pair. I think it was just to have greater, greater identity. You could see it from more visibility, but it's pretty subtle.
Okay. Okay. The monument signage for the proposed Atria. We had recommended that it's feasible to add some low level landscaping around that sign. Would the applicant be willing to agree to that?
So David, what was that?
We, I had asked if the applicant would be willing to agree to low level landscaping around the proposed Atria monument sign?
Yep.
If you look at the design provided, it's, looks like it's on a plaza right now, but the applicant has agreed to provide such landscaping. Absolutely.
You'll, you'll just work with our township professional to come up with the right landscape?
David, I just have a question for you about getting back to the, to the, the wayfinding sign, which we were just talking about in the basin, so that the gateway sign. So the question I have is, considering the fact that the speeds are much less on Washington than on Route 1, and we're coming to a traffic circle, do you see the need for a sign of that size?
So the speed definitely is more on Route 1. I personally had no objection to the height of the sign for a couple of reasons. One, I think part of the height of that sign is really due to aesthetic reasons. As the applicant mentioned, they're trying to make this a, a part of a, a gateway sign in a sense. So part of that height is a function of some of the spacing between the different sign panels internally within that sign.
But I'm talking about the overall height.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, as I mentioned, the part of the, 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 an aspect of that overall height, if you look at the detail of the sign, there is spacing, for example, between the Avalon and the Atria signs and then the retail tenants. So there is an open air between that side panel. The applicant could reduce that area and also get rid of that wood border to reduce the side by several feet. I don't know if that necessarily aesthetically would look much better than what they're proposing. So I think.
I think what they're proposing, I, I like the style and I like the material. I'm just curious in terms of the professional, our professional view, is this really, is this really warranted? Can it, can we have, I mean, you could basically reduce any sign, still get the design. Everything just becomes a little bit more reduced.
I, again, I, I have no objection to the height of the sign. One of the pains in reviewing this application, and this is no offense to the applicant, is that as Mr. Constantine had mentioned, we don't really have specific signage standards for this type of sign in this area. However, if this was a planned non-residential district, whether it's along Route 1 or not, if they were following those signage standards, they would still be entitled to a 20 foot sign for a project tenant identification sign. So our existing standards for planned commercial developments establish a 20 foot tall permitted sign height for a project tenant monument sign like this. So it is somewhat consistent with what we would otherwise allow for in a planned commercial development. One of the aspects that I tried to incorporate in my review was comparing what they were proposing versus what our typical signage regulations would permit. Now, those signage regulations aren't necessarily applicable to this application. However, they at least provide some sort of decent guidance. So based on that permitted height of 20 feet for a project tenant pilot sign and their proposed height of 20 feet, whether it's above the wall of the basin or whatever we're going to measure it from, I, I was, I found that to be acceptable personally and professionally.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, David.
Any other questions for?
Yes, I have one question for, for the Atria wall signs. David, you had identified, I think, two waivers with the applicant. And this is from the 5% total tenant wall.
Oh, yes, so the, the applicant requested a waiver from this item. The established, the, the, the permitted area of a wall sign for the Atria building would be 5% of the total tenant wall. Applicant requested a waiver from that because technically Atria is the building. There's no tenant quote unquote. So each of those signs are well below 5% of the total wall space. But this wall signage standard was really more geared towards a residential tenant on a larger wall. So I think the applicant requested those waivers out of abundance of caution because this is technically not a tenant quote unquote. So a waiver would be therefore required from the areas of both sign number one and sign number two.
Good, thanks.
Any, any other board members have questions for David? Okay. Who's going next? John?
John Taylor, Assistant Township Benjour. We have a review memo dated June 8th, 2022, was prepared by Francis Guzik, Director of Community Development and Township Benjour. We've identified a series of requirements under the stormwater management rules. And let's see. So has the applicant had an opportunity to look at these? Are there any questions?
Yes, I had a chance to review the June 8th letter and I actually had a chance to discuss some of the comments with Ian Hill at Van Cleef. And we will comply with the comments in the letter.
Can you speak a little louder or?
Sure. We will comply with the comments in the June 8th letter.
Okay. So those requirements are, are listed on page three of four and on to four of four. So if, if the applicant's going to address those.
You're talking about all, all the items mentioned in 2.0 stormwater management?
That's correct.
Okay, and the applicant has agreed to all those items. Okay, is there anything, is there anything previous to that that would, you know, based on the revised application that they would need to address?
They, they've asked for waivers for several things. We've, we've recommend. We've, we've recommend granting the waivers. One item in our report, uh, item one point O two. We had suggested, we'd asked that the applicant provide testimony to the board in support of the, uh, number of, total number of spaces and the increase. I think they've done that tonight.
Right.
Um, and confirmation, I think it should be a requirement. Uh, or a, a condition of the approve, of any approval, um, that they ensure that they'll comply with barrier-free parking stall requirements. Which would be required under any building permit review anyway.
Okay.
Yes, we would comply.
Okay, thank you.
John, uh, number E. It says here that, um, the applicant has to demonstrate that due to only half the proposed roof area being connected to the recharge facility during phase one, uh, that basin F one A will not surcharge during the hundred-year storm event. Which is fine, but then it says otherwise, they'll have to quantify the degree of surcharge in affected project area. So is this an either or, or, uh, what, what does that actually mean in terms of what they're going to have to do?
No, the intention here is that if they can't meet that, if they can't demonstrate that they don't surcharge, that they would have to demonstrate how they're going to mitigate the issue, the amount of surcharge that they determine they're going to have.
And is this just for phase one?
So several of these are threshold issues. Depending on what the applicant resubmits for a stormwater management report for a revised report, they may need to actually increase the amount of stormwater management that they're, they need to construct from other phases of the work.
Okay, but the bottom line is at the end of this, so we're going to be getting the same recharge and the same two, two-year, five-year and hundred-year results that were originally approved in the, um, application last year.
Absolutely, we won't approve it if it's not. They'll have to address quantity and quality.
Okay, thank you.
At every phase of the work.
Okay, Dan, you're up.
Dan, um, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give will be the truth?
I do. Dan Dobromilsky, landscape architect for the township. I submitted a report on June sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. There were two items, uh, both of them had been discussed this evening. One was the solar panels on the roof deck. Um, and the second one was the potential that the landscape will need to be adjusted relative to some of the signage. The applicant agreed to a condition, I believe, that they would work with us on the adjustment of the planting, so there'd be nothing removed from what the approved plan was, it would just be an adjustment and, and not a deletion. In regarding the pylon sign and the height of pylon sign, if you look at the exhibit that they had, it looks to me like they are proposing, I think, that it would be twenty feet above the fence that surrounds the basin. And that's what I think you meant by rail, is the top rail of that fence. So if that's, if that's what you want, that would be the way to state what the height would be. The fence is four feet, so effectively the sign will be twenty-four feet from the grade at the base of the fence, but however you want to word it, that's what they're proposing. The fence will make it, they're, they're trying to make it so the signs visible, the fence would block visibility of the sign, so you gotta be above the fence.
Any questions?
I think that was all the review letters that we had received, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's all I know. So, so what Dan is proposing, you're fine with?
Yes, that would actually, it, it's helpful because to Mr. Dobromilsky's point, you wouldn't see the sign if it's blocked by the town.
Okay, it's fine. Any, uh, members have any further questions for our professionals?
You know, I, I just have one comment when going back to this garage issue, not the sign. The memo that says the fire marshal.
Talking, yeah, talking to the microphone, please.
The memo that says the fire marshal has no comments regarding the revision came from the secretary of the planning board, it did not come from the fire marshal himself.
Mr. Lynch, the fire marshal, reviewed the plans. He wasn't even going to submit a report because he had no comments. I asked him just to send an email or advise us that he had no comments. So Sue, he looked at the plans, he met with the applicant, he has no concerns whatsoever. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, when the application comes into the building department for review, fire subcode will look at it. It's no different of the concerns he had when it was a five-story building. He made sure that there was protection for fire on the five stories when there was no six stories. It's the same thing with the six stories. I spoke with him personally, he had no concerns.
Okay, I just wanted that on the record, that the report did not come directly from him, it was a verbal report.
Um, Sam, is there any way that email that he sent that he had no concern, he, he sent an email regarding no concerns, right?
Yes, early on.
Okay, so then maybe that can be, uh, added to the record.
So that's fine, just refer to the email.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it to the public regarding this application only. Um, so please step up to the mic, give your name, you'll be sworn in. Uh, John Church, Dan.
Swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please, please state and spell your name.
My name is John Church, C H U R C H. At eleven Princeton Place here in West Windsor. And, uh, by way of full disclosure, I am a member of the zoning board of adjustment. However, this has nothing to do with zoning, the application is, is, the project is zoned for this site. And I'm not speaking, uh, on behalf of the zoning board, but, uh, just for myself. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, our earlier, uh, today, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, I distributed paper copies of a report that I have written, and I had sent an electronic copy to Mr. Sertis. I had hoped that it would get electronically distributed to everyone, including the applicant. However, uh, it, it has not happened yet. So as a courtesy for the applicant, I would like to give him a paper copy of this report. May I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's mark that eight-two, I think, like, eight-two, eight-two. Yeah, I think this was A one, right?
Yeah, we'll put a different last one.
Okay. Oh, yeah. P, P is fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll mark that P one exhibit.
P one, okay, thank you very much for doing that. Okay, I just want to say in advance that, uh, I do support, uh, this project in general. I don't have any problems with, uh, the, uh, the thing, we, we do need the affordable housing credits. And I think it would be, uh, a good thing to have, but I have some serious concerns about one aspect of it. Which, and I've mentioned this before, last October thirteenth, that, that, when this application was first approved. The problem is this construction, the destruction of these roads and reconstruction will destroy, uh, the habitat, the documented habitat of a state-threatened bird species, the long-eared owl. That is fully documented, and I have actually, uh, the full details in this report, which I hope everyone will read. Now, uh, the, uh, New Jersey Administrative Code, and I would like to read a section of that, which I have read before. It says that, um, the department, in other words, NJDEP shall issue an individual permit for a regulated activity only if the activity will not destroy, jeopardize, or adversely modify a present or documented habitat for threatened or endangered species and shall not jeopardize the continued existence of any local population of a threatened or endangered species. That, that's the administrative code, uh, rules. Uh, now, um, uh, if you construct the roundabout and the roads, this will destroy this habitat. We know that, it's, it's in the site plan. The woods will be torn down and the roads will be reconstructed, and the owl will lose its habitat, which I really don't think should happen, Mr. Chairman. It's, uh, it's really against the rules and there's, there's no excuse for it. Other than that, I really have no problem with this application. Please understand that. I'm not opposed to it. But I, I do have a, a, a suggestion that perhaps could be, maybe it's a little late to consider this, but I think it might work. Okay, I think we, what we really need is a better back door to this property to get through the New Jersey Transit parking lot and, uh, and, and get out to Alexander Road so that traffic can use Alexander Road and get to Route One without having to go up Washington Road. And, uh, that would be much easier for them. So I know in the site plan that I've seen, the new site plan, it does show an exit there in the back with a sign that restricts the, uh, excuse me?
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I should have, we, we limited, uh, comments to three minutes.
Okay, uh, uh, with your permission, I would like to enlarge.
Finish, finish your thought and then we'll go, then we'll.
So you can, I would like to see, uh, funding provided, and Avalon Bay would get a credit for this. If they didn't destroy the roads, reconstruct the roads, they would get a credit for the cost of constructing the Varn Drive extension. And, uh, perhaps, uh, maybe a traffic light, uh, and an enlarged exit so that traffic could use that exit through the New Jersey Transit parking lot.
Okay.
So, okay, in that case, in this case, I, I would like you just all to read this report if you, if you would, please. The applicant and everyone. I'm not sure that any action can be taken now, but this is my recommendation to reconsider this.
Uh, thank you, John. Doug, um, I, 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 hold on a second.
I think in the original application, wasn't there an environmental study done that kind of, uh, examined this or no?
We have all outside agency approvals, this has been reviewed by DEP.
Okay.
Already, so I appreciate Mr. Church's, you know, conclusions in here. DEP disagrees, we have all applicable permits.
Okay, I just wanted to, that's what I thought, I just want to make sure. Okay, be, before you, before you start, I just want to mention that, um, the limit's three minutes for speaking. If you have a question that needs to be answered during that time, anything that professionals, the applicant respond to, won't be counted against your three minutes. Mr. Sertis has the clock, please proceed.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and.
Guy Pearson, I live at two forty-one Fisher Place. I have to concur with Mr. Church, I believe there should be a back door to this project because that was the original premise, premise of making a development, the train station was to have a thoroughfare from Washington to Alexander. And that was something that was brought on by the, uh, round, round table that was convened for the EIS bypass study, when, when that was happened about twenty years ago. That's one statement. The other question I have is substantial amount of signage is going to be taking place. How much light pollution will be created for the lighting of these signs? That's a very important task, I think we should address an issue to see in that area what the, what the effect will be on the, uh, area around it with the lighting. Uh, if anyone could comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, a lot of the signage, uh, will be internally lit letters, so there will be no light pollution from that, and it's very subtle even in terms of what's getting some sort of a wash light. The light sources are, uh, concealed, so in my opinion, it'll be, there will be not be any light pollution.
Will they be mostly a downward lit?
Some are down, there is a, there are some that are upwardly lit, but it's again, very subtle and very focused on the signage, so we're not going to create any skyglow or light pollution with these signs.
And along your project, uh, what as, what timeframe would the roundabout take place in the project? Before, middle or end?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's all part of the initial construction, it's, you know, part of the roadway network, so it's at the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mike, can I make two comments?
Sure.
They, they are required to, they are required to build the, uh, main five seventy-one roundabout before they start construction. And if I remember right, one of the conditions of approval was that the road A, which is the main road, has to be connected through the NJ Transit parking lot before they get CO. So it will be connected through the parking lot to the other side, and they have had, had discussions with the NJ Transit on that.
Please step up, you have three minutes, not counting, uh, responses, the attorney will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that this, uh, testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Indeed, I'm Graham Alec, I live at one fifty-five Washington Road. Uh, I have concerns like Mr. Church and the, uh, other speaker about the, um, uh, the, the entrance onto Washington Road. Uh, I think that more traffic would be directed to Alexander Road, it would be, uh, better for the residents of Pennsneck, which is one of the oldest communities in West Windsor. Um, particularly concerned because it's already been addressed that, uh, there's going to be, uh, the minimum level of, uh, electric vehicles. So therefore, there's a lot of inherently combustion vehicles because that's what they're providing services for. And I want the planning board to consider, uh, the alternate pathways even beyond, uh, Alexander Road. There was a, there's a proposal for a pathway through the Sornoff, uh, property. Uh, I think Princeton University has brought that up, uh, as a overpass of Route One that would, uh, uh, would redirect traffic away from this, uh, Pennsneck, uh, community, which is already overrun with, uh, thorough traffic through Washington Road. So, uh, what is the planning board's position on that, uh, bypass route? And can you let us know what, uh, what you're doing about traffic in general with, that's going to increase with this project?
Mike, I can add. The, that side of the Washington Road is not their responsibility, but SRI knows, SRI is proposing various development, they know that they have to build the bypass. It won't, I, I won't hold my breath for overpass or Route One, but we will connect somewhere near Harrison Street. They are required to build their portion of the bypass, and then the township will get, uh, funding to build the pass over the Little Bear Brook.
What is the timeline on that?
Uh, if the, when, before they can do any project, SRI, they have to build the road first.
Right, but what is, I mean, is that in, is that in connection with the increased traffic that's coming from this project?
Not, not, it's completely unrelated to this project, they haven't made any.
It's not completely unrelated because the traffic is, is, is inherently involved.
Right, but it's a different owner.
I understand that the applicant isn't involved with that project, but you're, as, as mayor and as planning board, they should be, this should be in concert, that's my, that's my point. Because otherwise, if this is built and there's no leviation, it's all going to go down Washington Road.
Correct.
Combustion vehicles and families and they don't mix sort of well. Already, it's too fast where nobody adheres to the forty mile an hour speed limit.
Correct, that's why they were required to guarantee a connection through the parking lot to Alexander Road before they can get CO.
But all the signage is to Washington Road. So it seems like there, even though there is a backdoor, like, very few people will know about it, it doesn't have a twenty-foot monument. And you don't want to have less people. Yeah, I find my point is made, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I, I think that's a fair question, is there any signage, I mean, you, you won't get a CO until you, you, um, put that, that exit off, off of Road A, so will there be signage to that road?
No, that, I needed to make that correction, there's nothing, there's no condition that talks about a CO being limited by a connection to the train station. We don't own the train station. Um, there's a condition that we have to work with the town to facilitate that connection. That's, that's what's in the resolution, because that's all we legally control. Both ourselves, as well as the town, have been trying to get transit's attention on this for years. And transit doesn't want to seem to be bothered with either of us.
Any other, um, questions from the public regarding this application? Um, hearing none, I'll get, I'll take a motion to close the public, um, comments.
Well, it's supposed to prove the public comments.
Second, okay, so, um, motion by Dan is seconded by Simon. All those in favor, say aye. Nay. Hearing none, motion passed. Okay, so, um, any discussion, deliberations? I'll take a motion if, if you're ready.
I think we would have the discussion after it's seconded.
Oh, I need a motion to approve. We just closed the public. Is there, do I have a motion to approve the application?
Yeah.
In the matter of PB 20-15 amended Princeton Junction Train Station redevelopment amended final site plan and sign waivers. I move that the planning board approve tonight's application with waivers and conditions as spelled out by council.
Second. Motion to approve by Curtis, second by Annis, you know, as conditions enumerated by council that collected. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
There is any, but I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm still not happy with the 20-foot sign on the circle, but that's, that's, other than that, I, I think it looks good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and we have it seconded. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Shiktao?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Hoberman?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendel?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Karp?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion, application approved. Thank you. Okay. Five-minute recess will convene at 9:42. Yep, thank you. Um, no, unless they want to answer things about traffic. Thank you.
I know. Hey, I got the score though. No. 3-1, Avalanche. Second period. Am I getting the third period? I will see you soon. I would see you.
Please be seated. Take your seats, please. Okay. Okay, so I'm about to open up the meeting to public comments for non-agenda items. No discussion, please, regarding applications that are ongoing or pending. If I hear anybody come to the microphone and, and start talking about an ongoing application, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna politely, in my New York sense of mind, tell you to please stop. So please, please keep it to non-agenda, not open application items only. We cannot discuss, we, we talked about this and under advice of council, we cannot discuss anything regarding an ongoing application when the application is closed to public comments and the application, the applicant cannot defend, answer, or contribute to that question or, or that line of questioning. So with that in mind, please step up to the microphone if you want to have a, you talk about a non-agenda, non-ongoing application item. State your name, please.
Olympia Illyu Perry. Lawrence Township Committee Member for District 16. President of the Lawrence Township Democratic Club. Lawrence Township resident and a concerned citizen of what if? What if there was a proposal for something that could potentially hurt the environment for neighboring communities? It would not go well for the Good Neighbors Act that is in proposal right now by Senator Turner. What if we had a situation where there were approximately 14 to 15 people considering a possible cause or a possible effect that would possibly ruin the township for the future? A future that they probably will not even see, but the legacy that they will leave will be devastating. What if we were in a situation where the community's voice is not being heard? I am a businesswoman and I understand numbers. I understand there are receivables that need to be made so that a community can thrive. But at what cost? What if we would possibly put in jeopardy the lives of children? Of local citizens? How will you be remembered for the legacy that you leave? That's the only thing we have as humans, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. But I just ask you, consider what if? There are other ways. What if there's this proposal? What if this impact will greatly devastate the communities it will impact? West Windsor, Lawrence Township, Hamilton, and beyond. We all want to enjoy the spoils of the life that we are getting used to. Having instant gratification, deliveries from Amazon, we are all on that page. But at what point do we say enough is enough? At what point do we consider who else will not benefit from this? And I'm not stupid because this is probably already card blanched. But I would not be a citizen of this community without saying what if? There is another way. And we will not go quietly.
Finish your thought, please.
Think of your legacy. That's all I have to say.
Before the next speaker steps up, I just want to remind you that it's a three-minute limit. And the total public comments section is slated for 15 minutes total. So please step up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ajay Kaist. Address is 20 Haskell Drive. So my concerns today are about the community's health, our community's safety, our community's quality of life, our community's desirability, and our community's property values. I was just wondering, when this committee and folks like you, who I'm grateful for volunteering your time, make decisions about revenue. Do you ever put a price on our health? What is it? Do you put a price on our safety? What is that? Do you put a price on our property values? I haven't seen any studies about projects impacting, large projects impacting those. In your decision, decisions, as you sleep tonight and every night, think about this. What is the price that we as a community are going to pay? What are our lives worth? What is longevity worth in the decisions that you make? The one thing that elected, appointed officials, volunteers are supposed to take care of is the well-being of their constituents. The well-being of their constituents. I would remind you that we have nothing to fear if we work together. No lawsuits. We don't have to fear accommodating children in expanded school systems. We don't have to fear evaluating options for any decisions we make. We can do better. We must do better, Mr. Morata. You must do better as a team, as a community. So implore you, as you go to bed tonight, think about the price that any new development, especially one that has potential impact on people and the environment is worth. What will your legacy be? Let it be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please state, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Sebastiani Teresa. My address is 31 Arnold Drive. I've been hearing that you're not prioritizing the lives of the people here. I've been hearing that you haven't been prioritizing the lives of me, my friends. I would like you to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Do you need my name?
Yeah, name and address, please.
Okay, Nilofer, Derbary, and 19 Zilof.
Okay.
So I first just want to let you know that we have 146 letters with us today. And we have an online petition on a topic that has 1,455 signatures and is going every day. I appreciate. I'd appreciate if you could document this in your records and please each of you planning board members, if you can read. It talks about concerns that residents have about the way and the process that we have to deal with, especially with really, really large applications that come into our town. And that could potentially impact the lives significantly of a lot of people. I have concerns with projects that are really huge that could have potential truck traffic coming into town. I have concerns that kids, I, I'm amazed. I think that was short and sweet and to the point and it, it touched my heart. I mean, you're amazing. I have, I personally have issues with residents losing lives with trucks coming onto our roads. I have issues and I've seen the pain of people suffering from cancer without even realizing that it is a silent killer and has to do with pollution. And when will we all wake up to that? And I also realize that when we had a huge storm last year, it was a 650-acre property of wetlands that actually protected my house and the surrounding neighborhoods from floods. And I am concerned with the process that the town follows in terms of transparency with how applications are dealt with and the community is communicated and collaborated with on these applications. So I urge you to, to look at the process again. I also want to ask Curtis Hoberman. Curtis, I met you earlier before. You did mention to me that the agenda had changed today. And I'd like to understand why the agenda was changed, especially with the public comments and when the agenda was changed. I hope that's not counted. I hope that's not counted in my three minutes, because I have more to say.
I did not make the agenda.
Right.
I'm a planning board member. Someone else will have to answer this question?
The. After the last meeting, it was because we had two applications tonight and last week. The meeting was hijacked at the beginning, and it took 45 minutes or an hour to go through public comments. We didn't want to affect the efficiency and the timeliness of the two applications. So we moved the public comments after the last meeting, which was posted on the website last Thursday or Friday, to the end after the applications.
Yes, and I just want to give you a heads up. When I spoke to Mr. Hoberman earlier, he was under the impression that public comments would start first, but he then did realize. Right.
So it was a surprise.
To you as well.
Surprise to me as well, as a board member, that that change took place.
The change, this is not the first, I've been on the board for 14 years. This is not the first time the agenda's been changed to have public comments at the end. Whenever we have applications that may take up a lot of time, and especially in this case, there were two applications, we did not want, you know, public comments to go at the beginning, take up all the time for the meeting. Everybody has families, they have obligations, they want to go home too at a reasonable hour. And so we decided to put the public comments after the applications were heard.
And I appreciate that that is not.
That's the answer to your question. Thank you.
I do also want to call out, in terms of process, that there was a public comment made that our superintendent was aware of an application and was completely in the loop. But in the town council meeting on Monday, a resident read out an email from the superintendent, who said he was not involved at all and had only one, I'm sorry, but wasn't there a backing board? Is that included?
Continue, it's fine, continue your thought.
Thank you very much.
Continue your thought and finish up, please.
Appreciate it. You know what? That's all the public needs from you, to allow us to speak.
Yeah, but I can't allow you to speak forever, so I'm asking you to continue your thought and finish up your thought.
So I want to call out that Dr. Adahold has written an email communication that he was not aware at all, and he's very concerned about the residents and the school students and the safety of the school students. I also want to call out that at the town council meeting, for the first time, it was hacked, and there was complete noise disruption, that we could not hear public comments on an application that was due.
I have to stop you, I'm sorry. Because you can't, you can't. The public comments were stopped during, during the hacking, and then they were allowed to resume.
Yes, but we missed a lot of the communication.
There should not have been anything.
The public lost a lot of the communication that the concerned citizens were raising, and that could not be heard at a town council meeting. This was the first time ever a town council meeting was hacked, and it was hacked right when the public comments started. I, as the planning board members, please ask for a copy of that town council meeting. There were lewd comments, there were lewd pictures, and we could not hear the residents speak. As planning board members, I urge you to take our concerns really seriously, because we do appreciate what you do. I have acquaintances and friends on the board. I appreciate what you all are doing, but please look and realize that the citizens here are not happy. The residents are not happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to remind you that the public, I let her go a little bit over time to finish her thought, but, you know, I have to limit the public comments to 15 minutes. So you went over, so it's taking away time from somebody else, so, you know, please state your name and address.
John Mulcahy, Two Hereford Drive. I also want to talk about transparency and fairness. I think the recent observations, I see a very high disregard for transparency and fairness in how the planning board's been operating. And I compare that to my own personal experience and what I had to go through with the planning board several years ago. My wife and I, we've been raising our three kids. I'll just tell you a short story to illustrate my point. We've been in the town for over 20 years, raising our three kids. Our youngest, Marina, born in 2003 with a partial chromosome deletion, has incredible, extraordinary special needs. As a result of that deletion, she has, she is non-ambulatory, has significant developmental, physical, and cognitive disabilities. Beautiful and courageous, strongest person I know, Marina. She, when she was 11 years old in 2014, my wife and I realized our house was no longer fit for purpose. We could no longer carry her up and down the stairs and put her in and out of the bath safely, and just off her medical equipment, and lift her up in the wheelchair every time we had to go up the stairs. So we had to make a choice. Do we move or do we renovate our house to make it, keep our home? We chose the latter. We loved our neighborhood, we loved our home, we loved our community. It was an easy choice. We wanted to stay. So we embarked on the tedious process for a variance application. You know, seemed like a hundred, you know, question packet, and took a lot of time, energy, paperwork to get that done. Because we had the evidence to the community around us, we had the evidence to the planning board that we were not changing the fabric and the character of our community. We did that. We had to, we had to go around and take pictures of every home within 500 feet of our house. We had to send letters detailing the project to every impacted person or community deemed as 200 feet within our our property line, and send them via certified mail, fill out those green forms in the post office, send it to them. And then I was required to send that to the township to evidence I had complied with the requirement. And, you know, then I came to the planning board, and everything was great, professional, it passed. Everybody saw, you know, we were in no way, there was zero negative impact to our project, and it passed. So what's my point? My point is, in hindsight, I think that was, I'm fine with the process and how it worked. I'm sorry, I'm going to go a little bit over. The.
Finish your thought, please.
Yeah, so I'm fine with how the process worked, but, you know, for my daughter, for Marina, if there are big applicants that are not only going to impact, if they're going to have an impact beyond their boundaries, well beyond the 200 feet, they should have to positively notify certified mail to every resident that they're going to impact. So if they're going to impact the community, if they're going to impact the community by throwing hundreds, if not thousands, of trucks barreling down Clarksville Road and Washington Road and Village Road and Old Trenton Road.
You cannot talk about that. Now, he finished.
Hypothetically, if there were an applicant.
We've heard already, I can't have you continue to hijack the public speaking comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Level playing field, same requirements for all.
We've gone over the 15 minutes of public comments. I'll allow one more person to speak. Yes.
It is, and then press this? Okay. Um, how do you turn it on?
It's on already, just state your name, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is Julianne Teresa, and my dress is 31, 31 Arnold Drive. And I'm just going to say that while you're building, please think about my friends and me and our community. And while you're building, you're also destroying our oxygen and our trees and all the animals that, 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 that help our, our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Great, great job. At 10:05, meeting adjourned.